Yes, 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 sir. Yeah, this is Super Dave back here again with the PA Political Revolution Podcast and we came back with a, with a, with a, with a surprise podcast because after I heard this nonsense, I had to go ahead and do a podcast on it. Now, what we're going to be talking about today, right? Today, um, Mayor Boyte, the incumbent, and Mr. Floyd Baptiste, the challenger, they both did a, um, an interview on, um, uh, interview on Young PA Votes, right? And, and, and normally this is, uh, this is a friendly type of, um, a friendly type of platform for Boyte because you have all of these people from the school district, right? You have a lot of people from the school district come over and kind of infiltrate in the city government. So, you know, you also have people that work at the school district that's, that's kind of trying to come take over. And, and, and you also have those, those people being given certain type of platforms. So, this is kind of one of those platforms that they're gonna not, they're gonna, you know, kind of be friendly towards the mayor. They're gonna try to hide some of the information that's being displayed. But this is good, but I thank the, the young lady, Ms. La- La- Michelle for go ahead and getting this thing. I, I mean, I couldn't have, I mean, I couldn't have found no better type of, um, video for this. And basically, basically what's the problem with this, right? You have a mayor, you have a mayor, he's asked the question, right? What is the progress? Because he's, his whole campaign is continued to progress, right? Continue the progress, elect him, he's gonna continue the progress. And they're gonna ask him, what is the progress that you're gonna continue? And this is a straight killer. He's gonna give a run-on sentence, he's gonna give a run-on platform for about a good five minutes, rambling over some things that doesn't really involve him. So, I'm gonna go ahead and chop this up. I mean, this crazy, this sound like another psychopathic rant that he went on. You remember the first rant that I posted up? Where he was just singing inside of the mayor chambers, the, uh, mayor's office, just singing and, you know, going kind of crazy. This is kind of something similar to that, right? But I'm gonna go ahead and, um, let me go ahead and set the frames. You can kind of go ahead and check this out. I mean, you, you can't get any better than this. This doesn't get any better, right? And, uh, her name is Michelle Edwards from the Young PA Votes. Let's go ahead and check this out.
To want to serve the citizenry here in the city of Port Arthur.
Thank you. So, there was a question that was, uh, directed specifically to you based on the platform that you've shared with the community. And, um, it is, Mayor Boyte, you say that you want to continue the progress. What are some of those things?
One thing, the great progress is, uh, and it's something that someone asked me earlier, uh, in, in another platform such as this, uh, like, well, it's one of the greatest things I could say, I, that I might feel as, as an accomplishment, where the progress of being sure that we are prepared during the emergency management hours. You know, if you were paying attention to the news, I think on yesterday, uh, Agatha, or some, with some name, I know with an A, has already in the Gulf of Mexico. So, I want to be sure that we are prepared for disasters. That's one of the first things that you've got to do if you love people, okay? And if you want to serve people, you've got to be sure that you have them prepared for some calamities.
Now, right, you kind of heard what he's going on, right? Now, he's doing the scare tactic. Hey, I want to keep everybody in, in prepared for disaster. Now, if I was interviewing Mayor Boyte, right, just hearing this off, I would have asked him, Mayor, since this plan has been in place several years before you've gotten here, what has exactly that you have done that's specific to your progress that you've implemented on this emergency, um, this emergency management plan, right? Because let me get this straight, right? The plan is there. If you follow the plan, like Mr. Floyd Baptiste has said, you know, before for the city, then things will be all right. Now, this mayor understood the downfall of the previous mayor, Mayor Freeman. What Mayor Freeman did, right, because him, the city manager, and the, um, and the, uh, police chief, Patrick Melvin, they was waging war on the local police department. And in doing that, they originally removed some of the people that was originally on the emergency management system. That's why we had so many problems with Derrick Freeman, right? And that, and that major failure to respond correctly during emergency management system is what caused Derrick Freeman not to get reelected, right? In my humble opinion. So, you have Mayor Boyte understands this dynamic, right? So, he did, the only reasonable thing you do, just not screw it up. Just leave it, just leave the crap alone. Do not do anything to screw up the emergency management system that's already in place. So, this has nothing to do with Major, with, uh, Mayor Thurman Boyte, right? So, he can be gone and have another manager in there. So, they're gonna still continue with the emergency management process. Now, you're gonna go ahead and continue to listen to how this man talk, right? I'm convinced a hundred percent now this guy is fucking crazy. This guy is completely batshit crazy because of the run-on sentence, not running, not run-on sentence, just the straight rambling, damn near non-coherent for about five or 10 minutes. Now, I, I, now, I, I pretty much guarantee you that anything he's gonna contribute, nobody's gonna take that into serious consideration because you can tell from this thing, right? He doesn't have a clue what the fuck he's talking about. He does not have a clue on what he's talking about. This is another crazy-ass rambling situation where the guy's nuts, right? Now, let's go ahead on and finish listening to what he's saying.
All these things that may come about that are just of natural, of nature, you know, they, these are acts of God, okay? I know folk are talking about flooding and other things that say this is man's, you know, desire, or, or this was flooded because of man. No, all of these things, when water is involved, when wind is involved, and lives are at danger, actually are acts of God. Now, because he permits it to happen, he also gives us a way, as his word tells us that, you know, you know, you want.
Now, right, when somebody doesn't have a goddamn clue what they're talking about, such as Thurman Boyte, he's gonna revert to pastoring, right? He's gonna revert to something that he knows, shugging and jibing as a goddamn pastor, telling you, this is God made, God allowing people to die, God putting all this back. Look, look, just keep your religious thoughts to yourself and just answer the doggone question, right? Now, now, that this is, this is what they do. These politicians use scare tactics or a boogeyman. Now, we're getting the hurricane season, the boogeyman is gonna be the hurricanes in the water. You're gonna need to keep the same mayor that you have in place, right? You're gonna keep, need to keep the same man that you have, that you have in place to go ahead, so to keep everything normal. But the thing is, you don't need Mayor Boyte. You can get any other mayor, and any other sensible mayor that's gonna do, you already have an emergency management plan, right? I think, um, Houston is over there right now, uh, Chief, Chief Deputy Houston. So, they have a plan that's already laid out. They're gonna, since the, whoever's mayor is gonna be, um, there's gonna be, that's gonna solely call the shots, right? They're gonna direct the mayor on what the hell to do. Now, if the mayor is smart, right? If the mayor is smart, they will not muck this system up. They will not try to make drastic changes on putting different people in the emergency management process that has not been battle-tested. That's what Freeman did, that's where he screwed up. So, luckily, Mayor Boyte, when he got on there, he didn't muck it up because he seen what Derrick Freeman did. But hell, you never know, nah. The way this guy is acting, you know, I don't know if he's on some type of narcotic or drug, but you know, I'm, I'm serious. I'm, I'm not really clowning. You need to listen to this because this is serious. Now, if we have a mayor that's actually on narcotics, we need to go ahead and remove him. We need to go ahead and remove him and get this man some help. Now, I'm not just saying this to be funny, right? You really need to look at the direction that your city is going and see if you want this guy to be over the emergency management process, right? If you want this guy to have any type of vote in the type of government we have, right? Let's, let's, let's keep on listening. I mean, we, we don't need, we don't need a church sermon right now. We need some answers on what's the progress, what's progress has he done, right? He still is not answering that, but the progress, something that he needs to be, that not things that are in place already, right? We're not talking about systems that are in place that's gonna run without you, right? You have a city manager that operates the city, that runs the city. You don't need this mayor to do any type of progress. What, he doesn't run the city? Understand, your council is supposed to lay out policies, right? Lay out policies and make sure the city manager implements it. So, he doesn't have any type of progress. He is not over anything to have progress. Let's go ahead on and continue.
Don't be placed in any predicament that you can't get out of. But what we've got to be able to do is be trained, I have to have.
Now, he also said, the, the creator, right? Don't put you in any situation that you can't get out of. We've had countless people have lost their life. I, I'm, I'm not gonna go to, I'm not gonna go to the silliest stuff that he talking about. He's talking about some stuff to get you hype, hyper into religion and to think of some other crap. I'm, I'm just gonna leave that alone because it's, it's too silly for me to repeat.
Have a trained and informed group of individuals who will advise me on the proper things to do.
See, they're gonna advise him. Now, the only time that the mayor gets sole autonomy, right? Sole discretion is doing an emergency management declaration. Excuse me. Only, only on an emergency management declaration, right? Is he gets sole autonomy. And we have to be careful of the mental capacity that our mayor is in to have him have sole autonomy during a, a natural disaster, right? So, you have to understand, if Mayor Boyte is on any kind of narcotic during the time that they have an emergency, it could be detrimental for the whole city. But understand, he doesn't need to be there for the emergency management process to work fine, right? Because, tell you the truth, now that I'm thinking about it and I've listened to him ramble on his explanation, if he is removed before we have a storm, it would be more beneficial to the city. Now, people, let's, let's go on and you're gonna listen to what I'm getting at, and come on.
At, at the time. So, that's one of the first things that I would say, you want to continue that progress to be ensure that when these calamities occur, that you will be cared for and you have someone who's looking out for your best interest, to preserve your life, your liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that you have. That happiness is, 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 you know, your, your homes and your, your investments in, in, in material things. But at the end of the day, your life supersedes all of that. So, so just to be sure that I am prepared and to have folk who are learned and prepared to advise you on that. Now, one of the next things is, when you talk about continued progress, let's continue the progress at, at, and I think God has blessed me to be able to be a mayor or the mayor of this great city and to have the morale of a lot of city employees and folk who are working in public service to be at a higher level because they know that they have a mayor who cares about them.
Now, basically what he's saying, he is pandering to city employees. He's pandering to city employees. Now, now, this is not any type of progress. The mayor does not hire or fire people. They only hire, well, the council, right? Not the mayor in specific. The council hires the city secretary, the city manager, the city attorney, and the, um, the court, uh, court, court judge, if I am mistaken. So, they only hire, what, about four people? The city manager, understand, is the one that actually runs the city. So, this is not any type of progression that he can take into account for because he doesn't deal with day-to-day employees. People, understand when these politicians are lying to you. Understand when the mayor is lying to you. What type of progress that you control? You don't control that progress. Now, anyway, even if you were a super pro employee like you're claiming to be, which I doubt you are, you have six other council members that can outvote you. So, even if you are, it doesn't matter, the type, the form of government we have, you as a mayor, one vote, you do not control anything. One, you have the city manager that does the day-to-day operations of people that hire and fire employees, people. This is the one that does that, the city manager, not the mayor. But the mayor is lying to you again, gonna make you believe that we have a strong mayor where he does the duties of a city manager, which that is not true, that is false, and that is a lie. So, the progress with he's talking about employee morale does not have anything to do with him. And whatever he's talking about, good or negative, will continue without him. People, we gotta, you know, just kind of giving you some game, giving you some kind of knowledge on these lying-ass politicians.
Now, at the same, by the same token, and at the same time, everybody who works in the city is not properly trained or, or a guru or, or, or customer service. And that's something that we are trying to work on right now, to be sure that all of our employees know how to respond to the citizens. But then.
Now, I know you don't have anything to do with any type of training, man. What, what are you gonna train? You don't, you don't have any knowledge of that and training, well, that's, that's, that's crazy.
The citizens play a part in this, that's continuing the progress. The citizens can't call and want to talk real badly to an individual who's on the phone, even though you're upset about a service that you were paying for, okay? But what you want to do is be caring enough to be sure that I am calling to explain what my situation is and have enough faith in those individuals that they are going to handle what you have requested. That's something of continuing the progress. And then the progress of being sure.
Hold on, that don't even make no sense. The citizens calling in, continue, that doesn't make no fucking sense. What the hell is he talking about? People, see, this is why myself and other people think this man is on narcotics. We have a goddamn mayor that's high-ass flip, high-ass flip. And I'm not saying that to be jokey-joke. Look, this is a serious situation, people. We are going into hurricane season and, 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 and he will be in charge solely in any kind of emergency declaration. Now, I don't want no goddamn mayor that's goddamn batshit crazy. They're solely making decisions for the people under an emergency, uh, management declaration, right? Now, you know, there're gonna be people that's giving him, you know, advice on what to do, but hell, say this guy has some kind of, you know, drug-induced, I'm speculating, I don't know. I don't know if he is or not, you know, but they, you know, he has a history that they, they, everybody know he has a history that, allegedly, right? So, I don't know if this guy is gonna have some kind of trip or something while doing that. I, I'm just not trying to have this and go through the, the same crazy stuff, if not more than what happened with Freeman.
That if you are working for us in the city of Port Arthur, that you are actually being compensated at the greatest level, that we can compensate you. Those are matters and issues that I want to continue the progress on, okay? Then we have even some situations.
Hold on, he's saying, what, a raise to give his progress? Dude, you do not make raised decisions on your own. You have to vote of it through a council. So, he can be removed and nothing is gonna change. People understand, this is a one vote, a one-person vote. Now, understand, he's just giving you a whole lot of, uh, gas. He's just giving you a whole lot of lies on things that doesn't have nothing, it's not gonna affect him going on that. Let's continue.
Situations where we have a fire department, the police department, who are contractual for folk, if you will, or silver service, uh, employees, that we have certain rules that the other municipal employees don't actually align with because they are not silver service employees, they are more, all of them are at will, so to speak, but they have different levels of protection for their employment. But I want to be sure that we treat everyone better. And I believe that is where the level of motivation for our employees has risen and they are satisfied with a lot of the things. They can't be satisfied with everything. You aren't gonna bleed everybody with everything. But as I said, if you can get the majority, okay, of a number of individuals to actually agree and to align themselves with what you're trying to do, I know that you have victory there. And then, I guess, if I'm still, I'm not picking up too much of that, talking about continuing the progress, continuing the progress with working with a council, okay? I came in and we, the council wasn't, well, was a little fragmented, if you will, and God has blessed us to basically.
Now, this guy here's, lost his goddamn mind. You see, he's just rambling on, rambling, 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 rambling. Now, you say that the council's fragmented, actually, the council operated a whole lot better since he's on there, right? The council involves other entities because, yeah, I, I just posted up another video where, where Floyd Baptiste, right, the EDC director, had said that, hey, the council has destroyed the fabric of this city by just trying to destroy the EDC. So, when mayor and his frat brothers got in here, right? They pretty much destroyed the EDC. They ripped it down and teared it up to, you know, we don't know what's going on over there now, right? We, we just have to wait and see if it got any better or worse. But, you know, we've wasted money on training people, hiring people. I mean, we've wasted a lot of money dealing with this council, right? And we're gonna waste more money, we wasting a gaggle of money on the attorney. We got some attorney from San Antonio where we could have had the one that we had here. I mean, that's crazy. I mean, it's, it's nothing but a hostile takeover right now. So, you know, let's go ahead and get back to this and, and, and it's just crazy, man, it's just crazy.
We have a new council at this moment where it takes time to turn a big ship, if you will. And the ship is big and the waters are shallow. So, we've got to take time to turn this ship. But what I have done, I have allowed myself to learn municipal government. I've allowed myself in this turn to see how municipal government is practiced. I have taken the time to learn and understand because I told you earlier, I taught it theoretically. Now, I.
Hold on, did this guy say that he taught city government theoretically? Hold on, let me try to rewind this crap again. Let me see if I heard this junk right, hold on.
Allowed myself to learn municipal government. I've allowed myself in this turn to see how municipal government is practiced. I have taken the time to learn and understand because I told you earlier, I taught it theoretically. Now, I.
Now, what the hell does that mean, I've taught it theoretically? How can you teach city government when, when you learn it? See, this, this the type of bullshit I'm talking about. We have a mayor that's fucking coked out of his mind on drugs, I don't, look, I don't know what it is. It's just the problem that I can't stand when a son of a gun lying to me in my goddamn face. The guy just said that he theoretically taught the, taught city government. Who did he teach it to? Who was the goddamn clown that was listening to this goddamn clown teach government? How, where did the fuck did this happen? See, this is this crazy babble, this is psycho babble that this mayor is giving, right? That I'm just kind of sick and tired of right now. I mean, I'm just have to call a spade a spade. We need to get our goddamn mayor some fucking drug help, some drug intervention. I, 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 I'm convinced. This, um, interview has convinced me this guy is batshit crazy. I can't e, I can't even fathom the goddamn crazy shit he talking about. Listen to this crazy, man, look, people, listen to this shit. I'm not making none of this up to be jokey-joke or to make fun of him, but you have to understand, it is serious business when we have a, a local type of, um, mayor. We got a mayor that's fifty-one-fifty going off the deep end, talking, lying about some shit that you don't have no clue about. Now, we don't need you to learn city government on the taxpayers' dime. You need to have some type of understanding coming in here. And hell, still after three years, you don't know what you're doing.
Now, participating in it, in the practical of it, okay? And how it actually operates.
What?
And because of that, I, it takes time to do certain things. I wish that I could just get my wand and woof, and it happens.
Get a wand and woof? Well, how much time you need, man? You've been in there three goddamn years. See, this is, this is psycho babble. This is crazy talk.
But it doesn't happen exactly like that, okay? So, in this particular arena, people will say, I'm not a politician. If you get elected to public office, you weren't a politician probably before that day of election. And when the day that you become elected, whether you want to be or not, you are involved in the political process in the United States of America, okay? On whatever level, be it municipal, county, state, or federal, you are involved, okay? And you have to be politically astute in order to perform at the highest.
Man, we know you're not politically astute, okay? That's the whole account.
Highest level in that arena. So, what I've got, I have begun and I am practicing and I am learning. I am on a continuum, okay? That I don't know it all and probably if I said two terms, and it would have an opportunity to say three or four, okay? There's no way that I would ever know all of it, but.
Well, mayor, that's not the, we not actually know all of it. You don't know the basics of it. You don't know how to conduct a meeting after three years, mayor. The, the, the type of, the, what the issue here is, you cannot conduct a meeting, a meeting, let alone go into actual application, well, actually go into knowledge and application of municipal government. We still stuck with you on conducting a meeting with Robert Rules of Orders. We are stuck way back there, mayor.
All I do is just like you an educator, Miss, Miss Valles, you build on prior learning. You build on prior knowledge. So, I want to continue the progress so that I can build on what I've learned in these past thirty-six months to even make it better for you in the upcoming thirty-six months. And those are the things that have to happen. Now, when you say, well, what have you done?
Look, you can learn by going to council meetings, right? Look, I can tell you, I probably know more about how the city government should operate than most of them people on council right now. But the thing is, you have a passion for it and I'm watching, I understand. I talked to different council members, right? Been doing this for about ten years, at least ten years. You know, from following, being a white star with city government. So, you have to understand, you, we, we don't need you on the city's dime to taking all these goddamn flights to all of these, um, other pla, other cities, right? Every goddamn month, sometimes two times a month for you to fucking learn. And then all that shit you're going over there, you think you're learning, this doesn't have anything to do with municipal government, mayor. So, you need to go read a book if you wanna learn shit.
I've done a lot of things that maybe a lot of folk don't want to actually speak or say that has happened. But I know one thing for sure, I've been, I ran on a fresh start. I ran on putting all of the entities together and moving forward.
What entities have you put together, mayor? You've destroyed the freaking EDC. What entities? Please explain.
Right now, we talk about certain things, but I involved myself with a gentleman who had a consortium and a collaborative working, and we joined with the city of. and a collaborative working and rejoined with the city of Beaumont-
What?
And the city of Houston.
You joined with an individual, had some kind of collaborative consortium, man, like this.
To actually work with the ports in our area. And I was able to bring to our port director and, uh, because I'm blessed to have two ports in Port Arthur. There are only nineteen in Texas. Port Arthur has two. So being passport authority and the port of Port Arthur to bring those individuals into the knowledge of monies that the Transportation Department and the Department of Energy was actually going to be letting because of the bipartisan uh obstruction or the bipartisan bill uh that was passed back in November. All of these things, you have got to have yourself positioned to be able to take advantage at the inception of the distribution of the funds. You cannot wait until they put it out there for everybody.
Mayor, what type of fucking magic connection you think that you have that you're gonna get something before everybody, mayor? Mayor, they put that out there for everybody to get at the same time. They don't give you a certain certain whatever. Mayor Boitie from Port Arthur, Texas, they're not gonna give you some type of certain special type of information or some type of super monies that you only know about. That's some bullshit, mayor. They have people that are a lot more articulate and connected than, than you. That can actually get some things done, mayor. Ch- ch- look, mayor, what in the flip makes you think that you are so important that you don't, that you're gonna get something, anything over these other bigger cities around here? It, it just doesn't make any sense. People, the line and the cap, it, it's, it's crazy. I, I'm con- I'm convinced this man has lost his goddamn rabbit ass mind.
Y'all, it's just like anything else. It's just like, you know, you and your little friends might know of a sale or something that's gonna happen before everybody else. It's because of whom you know. And trust me, governments here operate that same way. Some folk are big different women, but those folk are unknowledgeable. And because they don't have the knowledge, I don't even have the strength to get angry with them. All I can do is pray for them and ask God that he wouldn't-
Mayor, what knowledge do you have? You just sit here saying that you learn in fucking city government. Come on, people.
Lighting them the way he didn't lighten me. So they will understand. This is not personal gain for Thurman Boitie. This is gain for the city.
Well, of course, it's personal gain for you, Mayor Boitie. What you wanna do, you wanna be able to bring people down to the EDC to any type of, yeah, the EDC, to try to get some money from the EDC. So you can probably allegedly get a side cut on the deal and to say, hey, I control this down here. You can get some money. But allegedly, when people have said you've done that and then they tried to qualify these people that you bring down there, they don't either, they don't pass the, the financial qualifications. So that's why, from what, you know, people are saying, right, allegedly, that you wanna go ahead and change the EDC from a type A to a type B. So you don't have to have all the regulations and the council members can be on the board. So you can manually approve this, right? That's why you're doing the hostile takeover to EDC because it's for personal gain, mayor Thurman. It's all about personal gain with you, mayor. Anybody that knows you a lot more than me knows you about per- your, your, your whole motto is personal gain, mayor. You don't give a damn about nobody else. Allegedly.
The, uh, brother. So those are the things that I want to continue the progress on. I wanna continue the progress to be sure. That, now, it was already in place that we would have fun-
There you go. There you go. Every goddamn thing I done said, right? He just validated right there. It was already in place. Pretty much every goddamn thing I'm talking about is already in goddamn fucking place, people. He's lying to you. He's so drugged out, coked out, drunk, whatever he is, right? Allegedly, I suspect that he's, he's lying to you and telling you the truth at the same goddamn time, people. You have to wake up and to see if this the type of mayor that you goddamn want to goddamn be a part of this city, right? Be a part of the, the structure that tries to get this city back on the right side. They've already tore up the EDC. So now you see, this guy done told you he wanna work on the progress but then told you at the same goddamn time, that is already in place, man. Come on, you can't- people, you can't get no better than this. This is nothing but comedy we have right here for you. Politics is nothing but comedy with these crazy ass politicians over here lying to you, people. They doing it right here in your face.
It's available for all the streets to be prepared. I, I mean, repair, yeah, repair, repair, okay? And I know that's a big question. That's a big, that's a big sticker. But you know what? And this is not anything where I'm trying to come off of it or get away from it. I have a driven in a city anywhere in the United States that don't have rigid roads. Okay, and because we emphasize so much-
Mayor, the problem is not that this city is the only city that has roads. But the thing is, you failed to execute, mayor. Since your tenure's in there, you've actually slowed down progress. We haven't done other roads yet. Mayor, we back, we at least two years back on the roads. This is under your watch, Mayor Boitie. That's the problem. We have money in there, just like you said it, but we not getting the work done. But now, like, like I said, I'm suspecting, right? This is due to that new bullsh- crap-ass uh cement company. They trying to run that through there. And I heard that a guy by the name was Boss Hog was tied to that project, right? So we'll see. So if you start seeing this one company that has connections to the hog is getting these contracts, now you'll easily see what's going on. A- 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 and this is the problem when you have, you know, I'm suspect, I, I'm just speculating on this, don't know for sure. Now, when you have personal interest getting, getting in the way, you have people want, instead of getting, instead of getting the streets done for you, they wanna run this, this bond money through a particular um particular um asphalt company, right? So they can get kickbacks on it. That's allegedly. So this is what's going on. I suspect this is what's going on, right? That's why you're not getting streets done.
But the roads are so bad in Port Arthur. I was driving somewhere on the other side of Houston and I thought I was in Port Arthur. Okay, because those streets there are just the same. So, look, what I found out, it's just not a Port Arthur problem. However, we are in Port Arthur, so it's, it's, it's-
It's crazy.
It's magnified for us.
Crazy.
Don't think that persons are not actually doing what they need to do.
They're doing it. You're ducked, you backed up.
And learn the functioning of our government from St. Port Arthur.
You don't, you don't know.
I don't understand, but again, they are individuals who don't-
There you go. You took the words right out of my mouth. You don't understand the functions of it, uh, Boitie. Anybody can listen to this goddamn pl- this, this podcast, right? Anybody can look at this podcast and see you don't have a clue what you're talking about and that you don't understand government. Hell, you don't even know what you're responsible for. You don't even have anything that you can specifically say that you've implemented and for order it to progress, you have to be there. Nothing you've said is, has a dependency to you where if you was gone, gone, we would have a negative impact. There's nothing on here that you're saying that, 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 that has that effect. Nothing that you're saying is tied to you or your performance where if you was gone, that it wouldn't still be going on.
Have the proper knowledge, okay? And if I don't understand, I don't think those folk of Lamar would have given me a degree, you know, thirty-seven years ago to say that I do understand it. But again, I pray for-
Oh, shit. Hey, this shit show is getting better and better. Who gave you a degree for what? Did they give you a degree for municipal government? Come on. Political signs? Come on, mayor.
And that's that God would enlighten them in their future on how to think and what to think. But because of that, we have a government set up where we have four different districts. Those council persons that you have for District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four, they have set and formed a collaborative within thems- within themselves. And they have monies-
Ho- hold on, hold on. Did Mayor Boitie say a person has formed a collaborative within themselves? What the fuck is that? Hold on, now, now I know, now I'm kinda getting a live reaction. Now, I started listening to this about halfway through with Boitie, so this started getting, this started getting too good, so I had to stop that and start the podcast, so I can't, I can't, I, I gotta see if this, I, man, look, this shit is too crazy.
Those council persons that you have for District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four, they have set and formed a collaborative within thems- within themselves. And they have-
How can you form a collaborative within yourself, people? Oh, 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 man. See, y'all gonna make me get the goddamn dictionary and shit. Just look up collaborative and then to see if I could do that within myself. That's crazy. This is fucking narcotic talk right here, people. I don't know what's going on. Listen to this crazy shit. Listen to this. See why I'm so adamant about this. See why I'm telling you about this. Listen to this.
Of monies set aside for the repair, the reconstruction of roads, okay? When that actually happens, I'd be in the mirror. I can't go in and tell Councilman Marks what road to repair.
Now, see, he said when that happens. Now, it ain't started, but he said when that happens. So as you can see right here, they have money, he's been the mayor, nothing has happened. But when that happens, when they actually start doing streets, he can't tell a, um, a council member anything.
Yeah, I can't go in and, 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 and tell Councilwoman Holmes what road to repair. They have already made those decisions. So what I want the citizens to know, so, so you can pray-
Man, the decision's been made since twenty eighteen. We've been going over the same goddamn decisions. We've been restarting this same process over and over and over.
Like this proper government, your particular or individual council person is the person that would deal with those roads. But I wanna continue that progress as well. I wanna continue the progress of re-
Mayor, what progress? Y- y- you just said it never started, mayor. You said when it starts, you can't tell a council member which street to go on. Hell, the progress never started, so what the hell is you talking about? All of this psycho babble is what I'm talking to. They use this to confuse you, right? He does this to confuse you. Now, understand the name of the game. He's gonna try to slick talk you where he had, well, I'm alleging that he has these deals with other people to really get that money. That's why they siphoning things out. Uh, that's why you can't, damn it, can't get a contract with the city. I, if I was investigating, I'd say, hey, go check that procurement office. You go check what's going on, who getting the, who getting the contracts over there. That's one thing you need to check out. Do you see they trying to take over the EDC? So understand, man, this, this is all corrupt over here. This is bad news. And, and, and what progress?
Powering and doing what's necessary to really just replace all of our old infrastructure. Some of the infrastructure is a hundred years old or older, okay? That could be folk, individuals talking about some type of drainage and some-
Oh, a la- last council had like a pipe bursting crew. Don't know what the hell going on with that now, where, where that's at.
Type of ditch and other things. That is prosperous. Look, y'all, that is, that doesn't even make sense, okay? But what you-
Mayor Boitie trying to tell you something that doesn't make sense, okay?
What I do, see, you want someone who is going to tell you the truth and not to politicize, I'm not trying to politicize it.
Now, now, we know he ain't telling us the truth. When he said he wants to be someone that tells us the truth, right? You do know that.
And I'm not trying to make me look good. I just wanna tell you the truth.
That's all you doing.
You're going to know is that what I said sounded like the old folks say, you could take it to the bank. Look, because-
I'll take it to the bank. I'll get arrested because they think I'm trying to rob the bank. That's what happened to me if I take your word to the bank.
We have this antiquated infrastructure. We have some areas where the infrastructure is twenty or thirty years old. But infrastructure, that's young. But you have that, 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 those, that water and those fluids flowing to something that's a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty years old. That's where the problem lies. So as a result of that, everything behind it, everything back there is gonna begin to flood because the water can't move freely through those areas where the old antiquated infrastructure is. Now, even before I arrived, there was a project in place and it's still there where they are trying to replace those different drainage systems that are part of our infrastructure. But again, ladies and gentlemen, it takes time. And don't think that they aren't working on it. They are. We have some engineers who are working. I'm telling you tirelessly trying to be sure that they first identify the problems, okay? Then come up with a, an actual solution to correct the problems and then begin doing the actual work to correct the problem in the long range. But all of these are things, ladies and gentlemen, that we have got to allow the process to happen for them to work. So those-
Mayor Boitie, you, we, we've already had this. Just like the streets project, mayor, we've had this since twenty eighteen. But when you get on council, now we having all these problems. Now we have to decide on which streets we have to do over now. Now you're just now checking that for trucks. So, man, look, th- this is the problem when you wanna have a mayor to try to control things, right? They're trying to control with the city manager. See, look, the city manager has a has a plan what's going on. So since the city manager controls the city, it doesn't matter which council member is in place. The city manager is supposed to run the city. But when you have an ignorant ass mayor that wants to act like he's a strong mayor when he says that he has an administration, he doesn't have an administration because he's part of one vote. His vote can get counseled, so he's not any better than any other person on the council. He just goes to ceremonies. That's it. That's it. And only in the emergency declarations, he controls the city. That's the only thing. That is the only thing.
Those are the things that when I say let's continue the progress, these are things that have happened during my mayoral administration. Okay, I heard someone say, I, because I'm just telling the truth, I got the mic right now, said about a mayor I, in my cabinet. Anyone ever heard me say that term? You see, when you listen to these individuals-
In administration.
And I don't mind them. I said it earlier. You don't have to vote for me if you don't want to, but don't try to take and ridicule and make me or you sound funny to an educated individual who is listening to you. And then, hey, y'all, all of this stuff now is recorded. They can go back and pray it again. Never have you ever heard me make that statement. I got a degree in this stuff. I know how to use those terms, okay? But these are the things that I'm saying. So I wanna continue the progress of being an intelligent mayor-
Crazy.
For you, the citizens in the city of Port Arthur. I ain't gonna make you shame-
Shit.
Because I'm not gonna get up and speak about things. I'm not gonna bust up the King's language.
How this motherfucker know you lying? He's saying he not gonna speak about things. I'm assuming he's saying the things he don't know about. He makes a shame all the time. Remember this goddamn fool? This goddamn fool was talking about the Kawasaki virus. Remember that? Remember, remember when this goddamn nut was talking about a dise- what it was, I think it was a disease and the virus was the same goddamn thing. That Kawasaki vi- that, the, the, the COVID, the virus turns into a disease, the Kawasaki disease. Oh, this crazy ass shit that he telling you, he, he lying to you right now. I ain't gonna make you shame. Y'all already know this mayor make you shame, man. He, he lying to you in your face.
I'm not gonna do any of those things. I'm gonna represent you in a proper way. And you had better be sure that I'm going to address those things that need to be addressed. Some folk in industry, they have a little beef with me right now. But if you have a beef with me because I said you're not hiring my people, soon as you're gonna always have a beef with me. If you have a beef with me because I'm saying you are disrespecting my position, position of city manager, position of a council, so when you do things and you do not inform us, you private interest, that's correct. But I want you to be a good neighbor. And a good neighbor will tell a neighbor next door, I'm going out of town or I'm selling a house.
Man, look, these people don't- Man, look, these people don't have any obligation to tell you. On when they plan on, um. Whenever they plan on doing this goddamn downtown renovation. He talking about Motiva. Now, this clown is actually saying this crap when Motiva has to wait on us. To move out of the, uh, Health Department, right? Because the city didn't do what it was supposed to do, right? By actually moving out of there in the correct timeframe. So now we have to pay Motiva rent to the tune of twelve thousand dollars. And now we had to pay for an AC unit that we wouldn't have had to pay for if we was moving out of there right now, so. All this shit is crazy, man. We're gonna have to stay there for two years, so now at least two years is gonna be. Put, put off because we didn't do what we were supposed to do, right? So now he's lying to you on that. We, then Motiva have to wait on us for two years. This is gonna be backdated by two years.
Or something like that. And those little things are things that I stand for. Now. I think that Motiva, Valero, Chevron Phillips, Hotel, all of them are good. But I know that they can all do better. Okay, the LNGs that I, that's a being paid, I know you're good. I drive over the road the other night out there. You know, where, where, uh, uh, I think it's simple, you know, move the highway away from that, that, the water. You know, inland, a couple of miles, made a beautiful road. Hey, that is good. I understand and I know what you all are doing in the community, giving a scholarship, awards to students. And also even do, at the foundation, doing endowments for different entities to, so they, so that they can continue. All of the, the, the studies and the progress that they are making for, uh, environmental purposes. But when any of my industrial neighbors decide they are gonna go above what TCEQ or EPA says. I have to say it. I'm the mayor for everybody. I'm the mayor for you and I'm the mayor for the people. That you are causing to breathe these chemicals that they shouldn't be breathing. So if you have a problem with me. You got a problem with God because I told you from the beginning, I'm doing his will. And that's the continuum that I want you to have. That's why I want you to allow me to continue the progress. Look, if you don't think I am representing you well, you got something else you can do. But if you know it in your heart that what I am doing is correct, proper, and right. And to the best of my ability, you should, I pray that you would. Find something in your heart that allow me to be your choice. Give me another chance, okay? If I didn't do it right the first time, give me another chance. I'm your little boy. I'm from Port Arthur.
I'm your little boy.
On, on West Street, raised on West Seven Street. I'm your product.
I'm your little boy. I'm your little boy. And, 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 and did I say this on a previous post, right? I said this on a previous podcast. I think it was Mr. with Mr. Train, alright? That we have some baby boys in, in the city. Well, whenever we tell them, you know, the problems with the city, they don't wanna hear the negative, they wanna hear the positive. But to get to that fully positive thriving city, we have to deal with the negatives. And we, and we have right here a mayor that calls himself, I'm your little boy. People, you have to see why this is a problem. No grown man that want, that deals with business, I, I can guarantee you, there's no. There isn't that many good leaders in city government. That's about sixty or seventy. That calls themselves, I'm your little boy. We, 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 we need. We need to do a whole thing on mental illness. And, and we, we have to have some way to mentally check these politicians, right? We have, we have to have a way to mentally check these politicians to make sure they can do what they're doing. And, and, and that's why I say these, it's something else to this. It's something else to this. I believe it's some form of, it has to be some form of narcotic. That's just my opinion, you know, I don't have any proof of that. That, that is just my opinion. There's no way we would have all of these crazies, psychosis type of ramblings that these have, calling ourselves little boys and. So the man's getting desperate. The man's getting really desperate.
And I'm here to help you.
We hear you, Mayor Barti. The, the, on, on just that question, I think you've covered. Maybe about fifteen questions that came in from Community Concerns. Uh, they, they spoke about infrastructure, they spoke about industry, they had questions about the continuing of progress, so. We hear you. We hear your passion. We hear your heart. Um, I do have one more question for you. You have a little bit more time for me.
We see you wound up. What you wound up off of?
Uh, question similar to your opponent early, but I'm gonna read it just as it is. So we had a question come in. It says, the city of Port Arthur has many, I, I'm sorry, that's not the one. Do, it's, it asked, I'm sorry, do you have plans to bring positive experiences to the city for our youth? And then they gave example of like Beaumont's main event that's coming. And a follow up to that question is how will you foster partnerships between the city and PA ISD? To ensure our students have opportunities to become successful contributions to the community?
Okay, the first part of the question, uh, uh. There are so many, and, and when I'm saying so many, that there are, there are several agencies now in America. Uh, you, you, you know, you see them at meetings that you attend, uh, you, you read about them. Where most time, now, now you'll really get a hard copy of magazine, you know, online, or you, you read about them.
What?
They have different programs and certain ones, some of them, I mean, they're for profit, and so to speak. Where they are putting different types of activities in parks, in cities. Where the citizens, the youth can have a place for wholesome family type activities. Those are the things that I would strongly support, okay? Uh, I, I, I looked into something, uh, at a meeting I was, I think I attended in, 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 in Washington.
Okay, now, in this area, what type of events? What type of things that you have going on in, in a park around here? Uh, besides the park in Beaumont, that everybody, that's a nice park that go, that people go over there and take pictures at. What other area, what other, what, what, what other spot that's, that's around here? That you see people, that, that you see youth doing in the park, that you have to see teenagers through twenties doing in a park? Go ahead and have somebody answer that for me. Put this on pause and kind of think about it and answer it. What, what is, what are some things that they have, Beaumont have, like in a certain park? What does Orange have that's, you know, real big in the park? What does, um, Bridge City, um, Port Nations Groves have? That's, you know, real big in the park. I mean, that's a real nice park, not like the parks we have here, but you know, we just, we just know, not. What, 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 the type of parks we have, what do you, what do you, what do you see that somebody has something different? Now, the things that's going on in parks. Are the real nice parts. The one in Beaumont where they take pictures in, I forgot the name of that one. I think somebody was talking about the water park in Port Nations. I never been there, but you know, I guess that's something, but think about. The type of parks we have here and the level of parks that we have here. What is somebody, what, what is going on? In other cities where that the level of parks that we have right now is going on?
Uh, uh, where there, there's a skateboard, uh, uh, facility in some cities. These are northern cities. Uh, but they, I don't know how many have gotten them down in this southern area where we are. But students, and, and, and right after I saw this, I. Was somewhere campaigning, really, I was out putting some signs up. I saw some kids with skateboards. I said, man, how would you all feel about a skateboard park being built somewhere around it?
Okay. Okay, Mayor Barti, his, his, his idea for the black youth, right? Black youth in Port Arthur, or black and brown youth, or whatever the hell is on his mind, right? Majority of black people here, majority of brown people here. His big idea for the youth is a skateboard park. How many black kids actually, you know, skate? How many, hell, black? What, black kids from what, sixteen to nineteen, maybe? What, what, what? Uh, people, you see where I'm going with this, right? It doesn't make any sense. Now he goes, gets some women or will for that, he gets this great idea from this type of shit. He doesn't have an idea on who his base is. That's how far gone this man's mind is, people. This is how far gone his mind is. You cannot make this shit up. A skateboard park. I would have goddamn, I would have goddamn gave him more credit if he would have said a tournament basketball court. If he would have said, I would have got another big damn court with five basketball rings inside it. I would have gave that a little bit more credit. At least, hell, kids play basketball more than skateboards. I'm, I don't have the statistics, but I can probably. Better dial on that, right? This is what's going on in our mayor's mind.
See, yeah, I said, you know, it's almost like, boom, you already had it, where they go, I would ride it, okay? I'm, you know, I'm at the age now where I could just watch. And, uh, illness like that, they would have competitions because there are competitions for that. It's, it's, it's dangerous yet it's safe. And it's something.
What?
You're having folk with guns and all these other things.
So you compare skateboard, right? We know skateboarding is dangerous, but you say it's safe. But you compare it to students with guns. Hell, well, hell, at least they don't have guns. Wow. This is some of the batshit craziest shit I've ever heard in my life. And I thank Mr. Sheil Edwards for this. I mean, I, man, look, I, this couldn't have came. This came right on time.
Anything similar to that, I would, I would actually support. Now, we have us, uh, our, our Parks and Recreation Department, uh, uh, in the South Pole. We has that department for the city, and I think that they are doing a stellar job in maintaining and creating. An atmosphere where we would have activities that are fun type activities for families. And families with, with, with young children from, uh, baseball, uh, field, uh, fields being redone and, and reenacted. To, uh, soccer fields, uh, and I mean, this new thing I just told you about, the, the skateboard, that's, that's something I saw. And I really wanted to be able to consider it, but right now, because, and it would take a little something for us to be sure that, you know, we would get it. But those are the type things that I would want to implement along with. A component of parenting back in the day when I was, uh, JP.
Uh-oh, blame the parents again, the school board deal.
Okay, and if parents are not. Given the tools that they need.
Hmm.
To be successful, the product is tainted.
Right.
So what we have is, we have a lot of parents that just think that they're supposed to be friends with their kids and they do other god.
Again, we have Mayor Barti, the epitome of parenting.
Being with their children, which causes the child to have no respect for them, then leads into this child coming out of the community.
Now, also remember this, this is from a man that they called Small Fee Barti, right? Small B for T, used to be a homeowner. And hey, if he caught you, you can give a pass, you can, you can make it to the class for a small fee. He'll give you excuse absence for a small fee. Little five dollars here and there. You extorting the goddamn kids. That's why I say the school district is trash and we should look at any politician that's coming from the school district over the city council, really. Now, there's about a few of them that's pretty good. Probably about, you know, one or two of them, I think that's, you know, that's good. That's, that at least fought this crap, you know, at one time. But you really have to watch some of these people that's coming over from the school district to. City government because they're there to push an agenda. And that's just from the school district to city council. Because whenever they talk about this type of merger, this type of merger, see. The type of mergers that they actually into is like their liquor store. Their liquor store is a school board, um, city partnership. That, that, that's what you get, a damn liquor store right by your school.
Having disrespect for everyone that they actually encounter, you know? And it's not just a Port Arthur thing, it's a worldwide thing. But I think again, you have to take care of the area that you've given charge over. So I would want a, a parenting component to be involved in everything that we would do. Because I believe we would be better equipping those who are actually with the children. Now, with a such.
Well, you need to talk about these teachers beating the hell out of these, especially these kids. What about that, mayor? What about a teaching component? That's what you need. You need a teaching component. You need an accountability component. For their superintendent. You need a removal component because you need to remove the goddamn superintendent. Because nothing is going we- well, under his leadership now.
Part of the question, uh, I believe it was the interactions and the collaborative with the PA ISD. And I would say even to being passed, uh, Independent School District, I would say Core, uh, uh, Academy of Accelerated Learning. I would even say Bob Hope, uh, uh, charter schools. I would want all of them involved in whatever we would do in the city of Port Arthur. And that involvement would be that we as the city would do everything that. We can legally and humanly possible do, you know, or, or, or be able to do. To enhance the educational opportunities of the students. And that enhancement would be from being supported to the school districts or various districts. And you know, the, uh, private schools, even parochial schools that.
Dude, we couldn't legally do nothing with the school district. The school district have their own people, their own pot of money. We, we can't do nothing with that, mayor. You losing your damn mind.
Makes, uh, say, you know, uh, and, and even folk who are homeschooling children. Because there are even, I think, associations that homeschoolers are actually involved themselves in. I would want us to be an integral part of being sure that they are equipped with what's needed. I know with homeschooling, as long as our public library system is in place, that we would be able to help them. As far as not having a physical library, so to speak. But they know that they can homeschool their kid and then bring their kid over to the Port Arthur, uh, uh, library. And find what is necessary to continue the, uh, the educational process academically and scholastically for that student. And then those things that we need to maybe look at or study. Or be sure that legally we can do to help our students here in Port Arthur. I am a proponent of being sure that we do those things. So that the product, and the product will be a person like you from the devils. Uh, who I've been knowing, you know, since the day you arrived, you know, that was ten years ago, okay? You know, and you would end up being a productive citizen. You know, these are the things, and it's kind of like the adage where people say, well, you put your money where your mouth is. I have been involved with young men through my fraternity, Cap Albusa, which is the greatest fraternity known to man. Uh, uh, you know, bar none, uh, as, 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 and I mean, I thank God, I've got national recognition. As well as, you know, provincial recognition, local recognition for being a, a, a stellar guy, right, a director. But you've got to be involved with the students to mentor them. You know, and we have just got to be able to just set aside time. And one thing I know about working with children and students, I can't tell you I'm gonna do it and don't do it.
Absolutely.
Worst thing, you know, so I would want us to be involved in it, and I know that we have, uh. I'm, I'm proud to say it, my seventy president of school board at the time, and we signed a, 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 a collaborative agreement. Uh, on working with the PA ISD on various. uh, on working with the P A I S D on various projects three years ago. And those, those things are still in place right now.
Okay, awesome, awesome response. Thank you. Once again, like I said, you, you, we've heard your platform in various forums. Uh, there were some questions that were presented, but I think everything that was presented, you have covered. So, um, what I'm gonna ask us to do now is to wrap up with final thoughts. We know early voting begins tomorrow. So for your supporters or for those who may not be supporting you, or those who are on the fence, what are your final sent, what is your final sentiment?
The fi- the, but the final thing is what I've been asking since, I guess, uh, February. Allow me to continue the progress. I've spoken and told you about the progress.
What progress?
I am here, I am available, I am approachable. Uh, I don't think there's anyone in the past thirty-six months called and didn't I get an answer from it. I don't think that there's anyone who tried, and if they didn't talk to me directly, they talked with a staff member. Uh, most of all, uh, uh, Christie, who, who, who is my administrative assistant, who has gotten to you, whatever it was you requested, if you did not speak to me personally. I don't think there's anyone who hasn't uh, approached me at church, at a funeral, at a wedding, at a bar mitzvah, in the grocery store, in Walmart, H E B, Koga, uh, or, or even at the red light.
Who was at the red light?
Tried to respond
He said the red light.
Positive way for, now, I maybe didn't give you the exact answer you wanted.
The red light.
If you'd answered, or told you where to go and find it. This is what you want in your leadership. And I would ask you to allow me the opportunity to continue the progress.
Hell no, if I can do anything about it.
Listen closely. No investor, no large industrial concern wants to deal with changing leadership constantly.
Dude, oh, 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 that's a goddamn. Oh, he went low blowed on there. Oh, he went low blow. Dude, you're not, the city manager is the, dude. Now, let me tell you how stupid that is, right? You don't think managers know that elections happen left and right? That's inevitable? What are you doing that they don't want? Look, the city manager runs the city. That's the leadership that they deal with, right? That's who they normally deal with. That's who they supposed to deal with. Not the mayor. It doesn't matter if you have eight goddamn council members. Hell, you have six come up at one time. What the hell are they gonna do? What, what, what are they gonna do? What are they gonna do if, if it do change? It's nothing. That's the way that the government is. So this mayor is lying his ass off. Man, he went low blow.
That you have a constant there.
City manager is a constant.
They know they can speak with about their concerns. They might not get the answer they want, but the relational component is in place. This is what I present myself to you as, a part of a continuum of leadership in the great city of Port Arthur.
Oh, oh. Hey, hey, well, well, oh, I just thought about it. Ain't gonna be no change in leadership. Hell, you got Floyd Baptiste been over there for what, thirty years? So there's no change, Mayor Barti. Don't even worry about it. If Floyd get on there, don't even worry about it. It's gonna still run, because he been over in the E D C for thirty years. Don't even trip.
And I ask that you would pray for me. I'm fallible. I began by telling you, I've made mistakes.
We need you to go.
God allows me to live these next fourteen hours or so for the day.
Man.
But his grace and his mercy, he allows me to have another chance. You don't have grace and mercy? Give me another chance.
Man, I know.
All I can ask.
We need you to move. Give somebody else a chance.
I'm gonna be here for you, doing what is necessary to move Port Arthur to the next level. I thank you, young, calling young Port Arthur votes, but I believe the both folks involved in this too. That I serve everyone, from the little bit of babies to the ones who are maybe incapacitated in a nursing home or somewhere. And everybody in between. I'm available for you. I'm gonna do what's right toward you. And be sure that I am going to serve you as your mayor. Begin voting tomorrow, May thirty-first. From five, I mean, from eight A M until five P M. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. That's from Ju- May thirty-first through June fourth, from eight until five at the Port Arthur Public Library or the Sub County Courthouse. There is no voting Sunday. No voting Sunday. Again, no voting Sunday. But Monday, June sixth, and Tuesday, June seventh, you may vote from seven A M until seven P M, Monday. Next, next Monday, Monday week, June sixth, from seven A M until seven P M. And Tuesday, June seventh, from seven A M until seven P M, you can vote. And Tuesday will be the
Oh, goddamn.
Early voting. And the actual date of vote is June eleventh. And you know why I love that day? Because if anybody knew my mom, Lady May, that's Lady May's birthday. And so if you love Lady May, I'll put this in campaign.
Oh, Lord, stop pandering. God damn, let your mother rest in peace.
I thank you. I pray God's blessings are upon you. I love you. And guess what? You can't do nothing about it.
Thank you, Mayor Barti. Thank you. Have a wonderful, wonderful day.
Okay.
Oh, people, that, that has been a clown show. That has been a straight clown show. And, and, and then again, people, is why I'm giving you this, so you can see what in the hell is going on. Oh, man, it's just simply ridiculous. And, uh, hey, that, that's all I have for the day. And then again, it's been a good episode of the uh, Revolution Board Gag. Until next time, peace.